Good morning, all you hearty souls. Thanks for getting up to us this morning. Today is Tuesday, February 24th. This is a special workshop meeting of the Prescott City Council, and we'll start with rule call.
Mayor Kirkendall?
Here.
Mayor Proton Kukneu?
Here.
Councilman Arnold?
Here.
Councilman Blair?
He's on his way.
Councilman Lamerson?
Here.
Councilman Lozelle?
Here.
Councilwoman Wilcox?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. You want to read the first item, and we'll turn it over to Tom.
Item 1A, Workshop for Review of the 2015 Draft General Plan in Preparation for Adopting a Final Version for Board of Ratification.
Good morning, Tom.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Now, per your discussion and direction at your February 10th meeting, staff is prepared scheduled for, excuse me.
Tom, just one little housekeeping item. Let's, Council, let's discuss how we want to handle the, this is a public meeting, and how we want to handle the procedure of getting through the discussion and then having the public participate. Any ideas?
Just, maybe just get through the presentation first, Mayor, I think, and then maybe we'll comment on it, and then afterwards, open it up to the public.
Okay. Sounds well. So, the council will move through with you. Council, if you have a question at the moment, it's okay to stop the process.
That's correct, Mayor. In fact, we were going to ask, as far as procedure, if the council would prefer to go through it, the first four chapters, page by page, or element by element, or section by section. The Planning and Zoning Commission looked at it section by section, which seemed to be probably the more, most efficient. So, your preference is...
What do you...
I would agree with the manner that Tom, to sit and try and go through the whole thing and digest it all at one time is difficult, so if you go through the first couple of sections, get through that, and then go to the next.
Okay, well, when we finish the morning presentation, then we'll go to the public for public comment, and using the five-minute normal rule, unless there's some reason to need more time. So, okay, go ahead.
Okay, very good. Well, I just wanted to briefly review the schedule for the four workshops, per your discussion and the direction at your February 10th meeting. Today's meeting, the focus could be on the first four chapters, that being the vision, the history, existing conditions, and then the general plan summary. And these really set the stage for what is presented in greater detail in chapters five through 11. Your March 3rd workshop will be elements five through eight, that being land use, growth management, circulation, and open space. Then on March 24th, we're proposing environmental planning, water resources, economic development, and then the final element, community quality, which actually isn't required element under the Arizona revised statutes, but it has been included in this updated edition draft of the plan. Your April 7th workshop will also be a public hearing, which the council may continue at your discretion to the proposed voting session, your voting meeting of April 14th. And then finally, the ballot language and written arguments for and against ratification are due by May 27th, in order to take this to the August 25th primary election. And unless there are any questions at this point, I'll turn it over to our planning manager, George Early, who has been the project manager on this rather extensive update of the plan.
I do have a question with regards to electioneering, with regards to this being a ballot issue, and with regards to council members. When you talked about pro and con comments being presented to the public, what is the status, the legal status with regards to that?
Well, Mayor and Council, the state law provides that we're not allowed to use city resources to influence the outcome of an election, which, and then, of course, we have also a city code that talks about employee, or limits employee activities when it comes to city elections, whether for candidates or issues. However, the city council may state their, obviously state their, your opinions about the various issues, for instance, the general plan, either in, either the particulars or as a whole. City council member may choose also to submit a written statement in the arguments book that comes out. There's a fee for that, I don't know what that is at this point. The fee is intended to recoup the cost of publication and printing of that. You may choose to do that individually, or as a whole, or as, in a group, preferably less than a quorum. You would have to pay the fee, just like any other person, you would be doing it in your sort of personal capacity. So, there are certain limits as far as using city resources to influence the outcome of an election. The city council doesn't have the same restrictions as elected officials, as do city employees, who can't, who aren't allowed to, and their state law and city code, allowed to advocate for or against the ballot measure. Now, that also means that in terms of public meetings, if there are campaign meetings, city staff may attend those to provide information, but should not advocate one way or the other.
Thank you for that explanation, John. So, if I heard you correctly, any one of the seven council members, as an individual, but not necessarily as a council member, could advocate in the arguments for or the arguments against?
You may submit, yes, you are allowed to submit a written argument for or against, you know, paying the fee that everybody else would pay. You could...
And that fee would not come out of your council allowance?
No, no, it's your personal cost, just like any other person.
So, you need to clarify these things, so everybody's on the same page.
Right. Now, I would also recommend that you avoid making, if you did it as a, more than one of you, I would suggest that you avoid having more than three persons sign on to a particular argument, because otherwise, you sort of have a quorum, and that presents a potential open meeting law violation. So, you could do it individually, you could do it as a group, but I would recommend that the group be no more than three of any council members at that, you know, signing on to one particular argument.
Thank you, John.
Councilman Lamerson read my mind, and you answered most of the question for me. The other one is, may we, as individual council members, go speak to groups around the community and advocate for adoption of the plan?
Yes. You, as council members, have a different, you know, in other words, elected officials can essentially politic for or against a ballot item. You can even sort of state your opinion, which is what you're going to be doing throughout this process, about, you know, whether this is a good general plan or bad general plan at the end, once you, once the majority of the council adopts general plan, if there are sort of dissenting opinions, that may be voiced as well. You can't use city staff to assist you in the advocacy, but yes, you would be allowed, as elected officials, to go to various public events and advocate for or against, because you're an elected official, which is, is a different standard, sort of, what's called Hatch Act, or Mini Hatch Act, than does a public employee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. We have a copy of the plan, which I will put up page by page, so that we can see the sections that you're dealing with, just to assist those folks following from home, but I will point out in advance that it is not going to be readable over the television to those who don't have a copy of the plan. This version of the plan is available on the city's website, and anyone interested in reading it is welcome to do so.
Excuse me, George. If someone walked into the counter and wanted a paper copy, would that be available as well?
We can provide a paper copy as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Sure.
Actually, I see you're already on page two. I already, I had a question right on page one, and this is up for the council, and you guys as well. I noticed that everybody on the page, that's the general plan committee, ex officio, city of Prescott planning staff, everybody's pretty much been through there, through the whole process, except the ex officio committee members. Councilwoman Wilcox and myself are listed there, but it's basically been a revolving door of council members. You know, I know Scamarda was on there, I think Hannah was on there, Steve was on there. Should that be also noted on this page, the other council people that were involved in this process?
We can certainly do that. It would be our intention to identify anyone who sat on the committee, ex officio or otherwise, anytime during the process. This version of the plan was just the latest addition of those who were sitting on it at the time of adoption.
And I actually probably should add one thing to my prior comment, to Councilwoman Wilcox's question. You, I would advise against, if you're going to advocate one way or the other for this, I would advise against using your city email account, or city letterhead, or sort of city resources to do that. Again, you can do that as an elected official, but you should minimize, or not, at best, not use any sort of city resources to do that when you advocate for or against this in the future.
Okay.
So, as I understood, at the beginning of the meeting, your decision was to go section by section. Those sections are numbered in the plan, you'll notice. The introduction is labeled 1.0. When we say section by section, that's what we're talking about, those individual sections. What effectively happens is that we will put up a page at a time, and talk about anything that you want to, and the sections that are part of that particular page. Anytime you want to stop or add additional information, or question staff or committee members on it, please feel free to interrupt. The introduction and vision elements are substantially the same as were adopted with the 2003 general plan. The committee made changes, much of the changes done by the committee during their entire process were to reduce redundancies in the language, and to try to narrow the plan down slightly, so that it was a little less long, a little less wordy, and a little more to the point in particular sections. Much of the initial section of the plan stood as it was originally adopted and written in 2003. There was one section in particular, and I should ask, if council's okay with it, what I would like to do is perhaps step through some of the sections where the general plan committee had particular interest and wanted to talk about it. That'll give you some idea of particular focus areas they had for discussion. It does not mean that any of the other sections weren't changed, it's just those were less controversial during the process.
Comment, George. I think it's very important, on some of the salient points too, especially since this is public, to acknowledge such things as, right off the bat, section one, general plan does not have the effect of law. That's an important aspect for the public to understand. It's simply a plan.
That's correct. Councilman Lamerson, one of the things that is often misunderstood is the level of enforceability or enforcement of the plan. The enforcement of the plan is intended to be through actions of council or actions by citizens. It's not something that's codified like the Land Development Code, which is our zoning code. The one section of the plan that does carry weight of law with it is the land use map. Amendments to zoning must conform to the land use map, or further the intent of the land use map. That one section is required under state statutes to make sure that the two conform. Generally, what you'll see is a land use map amendment and zoning amendment at the same time when they occur. One of the topics that the first few sections of the plan talk about are the vision for the community, the intent of the plan, and one of the probably biggest issues that was discussed at the committee meetings was implementation of the plan. There's been some discussion recently of a strategic plan. One of the options that's noted in the first sections of the plan is how to follow through with the plan and affect implementation in some fashion. Strategic plan is one...
Question, will we develop the strategic plan out of the elements of the general plan?
There is a lot of flexibility in the approach you take to developing a strategic plan. Most communities that use them will take their general plan and follow through element by element, and create an implementation strategy associated with each element or the goals in each element. So, yes...
I know that, I've brought this up several times now, over the last several months, that we've been derelict with not progressing very rapidly with a strategic plan, and I would like to promote the concept that somewhere through this process, we develop the thought process of implementing a strategic plan, so the community knows where we want to go.
Strategic plans generally are follow-on after the adoption and ratification of a general plan. You certainly can start the process before then. One of the issues that comes up during that review, though, is if there are, if we fail to get the plan ratified, and we have to amend it, you don't want to be too far into a strategic plan that then may have to also be amended. So, one of the things that most of the communities in the state have done with strategic plans when they adopt them, is to wait for the ratification, and then initiate a strategic plan at that point.
Again, thank you, George, for pointing out that we've pretty much run the gambit through the public with more or less another ratification of the 203 general plan that was ratified by the public. There's not a whole lot different in this proposal for the general plan. So, the concept, or the idea that, you know, we're ready to start working on a strategic plan, we can get through this process quickly, that's why we want it on the ballot right away, and we need to get a strategic plan in order. I mean, we should have done it before today. I mean, you know, the last plan was adopted in '03, well, actually, '04, but it's time.
Strategic plans are one of a number of different ways to implement general plans, and certainly, if it's council's desire to pursue that, we will be able to pursue it.
Thank you.
So, within the vision element, the decision by council to pursue a strategic plan is something that will take a separate action by council, sometime following the adoption of this plan, or perhaps following the ratification of this plan. The committee had a minor concern about the concept of a strategic plan, if it's written too strictly, can tie the hands of future councils, and that's something that is an issue that council should consider during that drafting of a strategic plan. Most of the rest of the initial section, all of Article 1, Element 1, address very few changes to what's already existing in the 2003 plan that was ratified by the public in 2004. So, we have minor changes, a few wording changes, again, a reduction in some of the redundancies in the language associated with that. The committee chose not to rewrite the vision statement. Some minor modifications were made, but the overall statement was left to stand. The Planning Commission agreed with that, and left it pretty much unchanged as far as their review process. That leads into Article 2, Element 2, which is physical setting and history. Again, very few, if any, changes were made to this section. Not much of our history has changed in 10 years. One of the things they wanted to do, again, was to address the, any redundancies in the language. There were a few minor comments made relating to some of the sections that talked about, in particular, events that we thought would happen shortly after the 2003 plan was adopted that haven't happened. Those things were addressed, again, very minor language changes. The next two sections of the plan, Elements 3 and 4, did see quite a bit of change. Element 3, Existing Conditions and Trends, was addressed, I guess, primarily by the committee with the intent of trying to lay out the steps and the issues they wanted to deal with through the rest of the elements of the plan. Elements 5 and on are real, in-depth elements that affect the activities of city council and the citizens of Prescott. Element 3 sort of is a synopsis of those types of issues that the city's been dealing with, and those things lead into Element 4, which is a summary of how the remainder of the plan will address those elements. One of the things that we spent a lot of time on with Element 3 was to update population demographic information based on the 2010 census, because we had new numbers, and to look at some other numbers that are available from the state on population, and economic conditions, and those types of things. So, one of the things you see in here is a lot of updated information using 2010 census numbers that sort of show that our population growth has slowed somewhat. It did not decline. There was some misunderstanding of the census data when it came out in 2010, that a lot of folks thought that the population in Prescott actually reduced. It did not. It didn't grow as fast as the state assumed it would grow, and therefore, the numbers were different. We have seen a continual growth in the middle range of populations. The Census Bureau picks 19 to 64 range for their numbers. That population bracket is growing faster than the 0 to 18 population range, and it's growing slightly faster than the over 65 population range, but only slightly. We continue to see a trend of aging population, both for those folks who are here, aging in place, as well as for folks coming into town. This is still a retirement population, a retirement destination. A lot of folks come here when they get an opportunity to retire elsewhere. That trend is reflected in our data now. Some other data and information on population breakdown by sex, race, economic conditions also included in this element, and certainly, if you have any questions or desires to talk about any of these things, we can stop at any point and do so.
George, can we go back to page 5, just for a second, please? Under employment opportunities, there's some, there's a list of focus areas that touch on a lot of different things, but I think that this council, and I'd be curious what some of the conversation was, I'd like to see something along the lines of skilled labor. We know that skilled labor traditionally is higher paid, may be more capable of living in the city of Prescott, et cetera, but it also goes across numerous different employment bases and opportunities.
This list was originally based on focus areas that the state of Arizona adopted for their economic development programs that were in effect prior to the 2003 plan being adopted. There may have been some minor terminology changes, but this is effectively the same list the state originally had. Certainly, adding an emphasis to more higher-level technology and those types of things were part of the focus of that.
Absolutely. I mean, as an example, when we look at manufacturing or assembly of skilled labor out near the airport, we have numerous employment opportunities where people have to have some level of education, some level of training, and I think that those are areas that we'd like to continue to see expand as we look at the airport and to the future. So, that's something I'd like to see referenced a little bit stronger, as more of a focus, or an additional focus of skilled labor, things that require training, looking for those types of opportunities to develop.
Very good. We can add to the list, or we can emphasize it through an addition of a paragraph, or bullet point below that list.
Thank you.
I'll ditto that. I was going to suggest we add manufacturing, but I think what Charlie's suggesting is a little broader.
So, again, Element 3 has a lot of statistical data. Some of that continues to be collected. We would anticipate giving you one final recap before you finally adopt the plan, prior to establishing ballot language, that would bring it as close to up-to-date as possible with available data. Traffic circulation and management has been and remains a focus of general plan. We have an entire element related to that, that you'll address later in the process. That was one of the areas where we had quite a bit of input from our traffic engineer, public works director, even the city manager participated in those discussions, trying to help us identify things on the circulation map that is part of the general plan, proposed roads, proposed connectivity of roads, additional lane miles, et cetera. That was a pretty big focus. Everyone understands traffic management and circulation are particular issues, given our topography and our continued focus as an employment center for the area. We have a lot of traffic in and out of Prescott during the day, and that needs to be maintained, and our roads need to be maintained associated with that. The other, the other issue that...
I do have a question. Certainly, George, if you don't mind. And I've brought this up before at various council meetings, and I don't mean it from a, I don't want to use the word derogatory, but for the lack of a better word at this point in time, from a derogatory perspective, the citizens, the tax base of the city of Prescott, are paying to create and maintain a tremendous amount of the roads that provide a tremendous amount of employment for a lot of people that don't live here. Was there any thought process, besides sales tax, built into the plan, as to how we're going to capture the dollars that are necessary to provide the roads for this employment for people that are not subject to paying through either, you know, rooftops also, or retail also follows rooftops. So, you know, a lot of the rooftops that used to be here in Prescott, until such time as property got expensive, et cetera, and everything, kind of expanded into an urban sprawl, now, all of a sudden, we're in a dilemma, trying to manage roads to supply jobs, et cetera, for people that don't live here. Did the plan at all contemplate, in the process, opportunities to create the dollars that are necessary to provide and maintain the road structure that brings folks to the job place?
The plan does have a series of goals associated with the element on traffic engineering and traffic maintenance and circulation. So, those goals don't specifically address tax dollar increases, or methods of collecting additional monies to fund it, but they talk about the programs that are possible to do that. Obviously, anything that's a regional road or traffic circulation, within our traffic circulation element, is potentially funded through federal dollars, through Cempo, through the Central Yavapai Metropolitan Planning Organization. They also have regional traffic planning programs that are underway and have been addressed. We've coordinated with them in development of plan map, to make sure that the roadways that they're anticipating, and the roadways we're showing on our map, correspond or coordinate, so that we don't have conflict in design or planning standards. One of the other things that the plan does, and you'll see a lot of discussion of it later, as we go through housing element, growth and development elements, is to contemplate the fact that a lot of those residential components that bring people out of Prescott and make them commute into Prescott for work, can be addressed through the housing element and through the land use element. Providing less regulation for development, in some cases, will attract development to fill niches that exist, and one of the niches that may exist...
Can you say that one more time, so it's loud and clear? Get rid of some of the regulations that impede the opportunity for developers to create housing that's livable here?
That was a, big focus of the committee was to try to recommend that very approach, that we don't usually accomplish a lot of additional housing by imposing it. You accomplish it by creating an opportunity for folks who do that type of housing. And we have seen some increase in focus on housing for the elderly, and some housing that's more affordable, workforce-affordable housing, coming into the area, partially because we've worked with those developers to try to get there, and reduce some of the costs and impact on the developer during the process. This very council adopted a reduced impact fee that accomplished some of that, just via that particular one step. So, there are a number of other things that are addressed further into the plan, that I think you will probably want to spend some more time on, as we get to those elements.
I have a question. We're sitting here talking about these important things for our community. I agree with Mr. Lamerson at this point. Is there somebody taking notes to bullet point identified areas to the strategic plan? I've heard three so far.
Yes.
One's traffic, one's regulation and housing, and the other one I have written down. But are we putting, making notes to those, so we just don't have a meeting here, and then everybody kumbaya's and passes this thing, and nothing happens? I want to see an action plan out of this thing. I think that his very comments about roads being used needs to drive a conversation with the county. They have a way to tax road infrastructure, and the city may have an opportunity to work with them to get a portion of that money back, to help us with our roads. Those conversations are real, and they need to happen.
We are taking notes. We're going to go through any of your comments, and make sure that we've captured any of the concepts that you would like to see discussed later, either through the strategic planning process, or in a recap discussion before we end. planning process or in a recap discussion before we end the review of the plan. One of the issues that has come up for a number of discussions is the city's annexation policy. Council adopted a policy on annexations that focused a certain priority list. It is a priority list and not a limitation. The priority list focuses on annexing areas that are undeveloped because the greatest potential for income and control of that development in conformance with the city's requirements occurs if you annex undeveloped lands. Already, existing residential development brings the least amount of impact to the city or positive input to the city. So those things tend to be prioritized but are not a specific limitation, and council certainly is not limited to only annex in the order that your annexation priority list appears.
Mayor and council, I would suggest we review the annexation policy. First of all, as we've talked about many times, and it's reflected in the document here, we have -- the city has annexed substantial tracts of land, commercial, industrial, and There is some interest in additional annexations by parties who have or will bring water in, which is a limiting factor. But I just don't think anymore that, for the purposes of the, at least the medium and possibly even the long-term future, that we need an annexation policy that says we want to focus on commercial and industrial because we've got enough land, we've got more land than water now. Let me just leave it at that. So I think that it would be good if the council reviewed that policy with potentially changing it, because if it's not accurate, why have it?
Is that something that we have in a workshop forum?
Pardon me?
Is that something we'd have in a workshop forum?
Well, to...
What we discuss?
Really, to your last comment, Councilman Blair, with respect to comments and action items, I've really got, you know, three columns in my table here. One is general plan. The first column's general plan. That is, through the council discussion, you may want to make some adjustments or changes to this document we're reviewing today. The second is a strategic plan as an implementing mechanism for the general plan. But then in the third column are codes, ordinances, procedures, and so forth. So I would fit that particular item into that third column, which is a list of action items to be tuned up or revised.
Thank you, Mr. McConnell, for bringing that up, because, you know, we've been talking about getting a code development rewrite group team, whatever you want to call us, together to eliminate some of the obstacles that prevent people from, you know, at one time, this community was fine. They developed with 50-foot lots, and everybody loved Prescott, and it afforded the opportunity for people to live here. Now we've got a footprint, where you've got to have a billion dollars just to build a house. You know, these things have got to be altered and stop. I used to use the word economically cleansing in this community. The workforce needs to have an opportunity through a free market, but we have horns wackled the free market in a way that landowners and developers can't provide the product that would keep some of our desired personnel living here. You know, it's tough when your cops got to live out of town, your firemen got to live out of town, your streetspeople got to live out of town. You know, in fact, the matter is, part of that has to do with some of the codes we implemented in this community, and they need to be changed. So I'm just sharing that with you, especially before the water runs out. You know, that bothers me, too. One time, a few years back, we put into a policy that we could direct 20% of our alternative water to be used for affordable housing. Well, the only affordable housing that's available is for seniors, predominantly for seniors, and that's because of the cost of dirt and the availability because of footprints that we have in our code. So I really think we need to spur this conversation a little quicker and a little sooner than later before we don't have any water to distribute anymore.
Mayor, council, can I make one other comment? And this will be more specifically addressed in 4.2, which is a balanced mix of land uses. But if, at least in my experience, if you review the literature with respect to land use and cost of service, over and over, you'll find out that it costs more to serve residential development than industrial, commercial development. I don't know that that's necessarily the case. I'm questioning that assumption in the city of Prescott because as we talked about on February 12th at our general fund budget workshop, when you look at the actual property tax that's collected for commercial property, no way is that property tax being correlated with the cost of service for commercial, industrial property. So my point is that in many places in this country with substantial property taxes, that may be a conclusion, which is supported by the facts. I'm not sure that because of our very low, low, almost negligible property tax that is levied by the city of Prescott and goes to general fund and pays for public safety services, that I'm not sure that that assumption is valid, but I'd like to put that on the table for further analysis.
Craig, that's partially a result of our very low participation in the property tax program.
Exactly.
If you were looking at the county side or the school side, and you look at commercial, that's a different...
Absolutely.
It's a very different situation.
Yeah, it's not that they, as you're -- that's exactly right, and we saw that at the February 12th workshop. It's not that the total tax bill for commercial property is astronomically low, it's that the city of Prescott's slice of that property tax is negligible.
Absolutely. But if we had the opportunity to increase property tax, that changes that appreciably as you move along.
I think we'd have to go a long way.
Mayor, I just got to add in on that, like I did before. I disagree a little bit with that, and I think anytime you bring in a facility that brings new wealth into the community, you're going to see that money spent somewhere else. You know, if we just concentrate on rooftops, we get the money from that. But, you know, if we build a giant factory, I want to own the mini-market right outside that factory, and I want to own the clothing factory and the grocery stores down from that factory. I think that'll eventually come back for us. And, you know, growing up here, I've had to deal with the wages that are paid here for a majority of our industries, and tourism typically brings low wages. If we can bring some kind of light industry and we can encourage that, I think eventually we'll see that money come back, and I think we'll see a lot of lives changed in Prescott.
Well, my only comment there, you need rooftop growth in proportion to the industrial growth to see both sides of the...
Then for...
You can provide the jobs, but if they live in another municipality, that generally is where the majority of their paycheck is spent. So just creating jobs without residences, you have another problem.
Yeah. And Mayor Protam, Mayor, council, I could have been a little bit clearer. My comment went to the cost of service. It did not go to the desirability of economic growth. That is, as you rightly point out, in the event of industrial, commercial development, jobs are created, and then you have workers who spend money and paychecks and things like that. That's not what I was saying. I was strictly focusing on statements that are prevalent in the literature, that it costs less to serve industrial and commercial than it does to serve residential development. And I think that if we're going to make that statement, we better have a basis for it. That's all I'm saying.
And I agree with that. I've just seen it from the other side, too. I went from shoveling asphalt for $7.50 an hour to a factory job in Prescott Valley. Well, I brought that paycheck back to Prescott, and I paid my property taxes. I did all my shopping for groceries here in Prescott. So, you know, I just don't see how fresh wealth into a community is ever a bad thing. And I understand now what the point he was making, but just want to keep going down that road. We need to bring some quality jobs here.
Thank you. I don't argue with Chris's point that fresh wealth is good. Still, my point still remains, if we don't do something about the codes that hamper the free market from addressing the market that's here, housing within a cost structure that this region has developed for dollars, whether it be through tourism, whether it be through government money that pays for our police and our fire and our sewer workers and everybody to be on the road heading out of town every day and coming back into town every day. You know, we need to change some of the codes to address that opportunity for them not to be that way. And I think in doing that, if you could keep some of that wealth that goes out of town every day in town, they would be shopping in a lot of the areas that are around their housing rather than going someplace else. Just, that's my point.
Thank you. One of the things, the city manager touched on the issue of the annexation policy, and it's an interesting issue. We don't have local statistical data that would help with a modification to the language in the plan, and that may be something that can be addressed through the strategic planning process as well. Cost of provision of services is something that we generally use nationwide statistical data on, and that's where it comes from. There is some discussion in Article Three regarding the land use mix and trends. That's an attempt to address some of the things that are currently going on within the community. Again, finer or no changes at all to that particular section. There's some discussion of the housing element and types and variety, affordability, and quality. Those are all issues that council's already talked about some this morning. Obviously, it's an important topic. If you have residents living here and working here, then they spend their money here much more often than if they travel to another location where they live. There's a particular discussion regarding the impact fee reduction that council enacted not too far in the past that has, to the committee, had a very positive effect as far as a removal of a disincentive for development of various levels of control, levels of economic affordability within the community. So that was a very positive thing done by council and recognized by the committee by an addition to the plan to cover that.
I have one follow-up comment, just thinking about this discussion, and it's something I think we're going to have to come back to. If you look at the houses that are being built in Prescott today, you know, a majority of them don't even come close to fitting into the affordable housing number that would be talked about as a region. When you look at the available land structure of what's out there, and you look at the actual cost to develop land, there are minimal opportunities, regardless of our codes and costs, to achieve a house that would be in the low to mid-100s. I mean, the reality that that is going to happen in Prescott, Arizona, unless there's significant subsidy to it or a federal program, is going to be very difficult. Piece of property that was recently looked at, in order to get the infrastructure to it, would require boring under Highway 89. That is not cheap. That's $200 to $300 per foot, and you have to do three of those across the highway. And you have topography challenges. All the easy land has been developed. Somebody would have done that already. So when we start talking about impact fees and we start down this path about how do we get to affordability, I'm not saying that it's impossible, but at the same time, we have a reality in our budgets as it relates to our general fund, and the minute we start looking at ways to make one thing work, we start creating a whole bunch of additional problems in funding the services that we are providing. So as we talk about this concept and we move into the more specific categories, I think that's something that we need to think about, is how do we incentivize without further hindering ourselves? Multi-family infill is going to be something I think we're going to see a lot of. You know, we have a lot of lots that are already watered, already in place, ready to be built on in the city of Prescott. I think that our focal point should be on how do we utilize the existing infrastructure, the existing lots, while understanding that opportunities may present themselves into the future. I'll be honest, there's chance, there's opportunity out there for that affordable housing in the existing, but under new, and this is what I've done for a decade, it's going to be hard to find unless it's in a new annexation area, and we run into water problems and service-level problems. It just goes on and on.
That's a very good point. The committee did spend some time discussing those issues, and a lot of the focus of the housing discussion further on into the plan, talk about infill development on existing lots that have infrastructure already there, available, and less expensive to tap into.
Part of that discussion needs to happen with the state of Arizona. And I've mentioned several times over and over again, and it falls on deaf ears because I don't think that, whether it's the city's role or not the city's role, but you have property on the corner of Pioneer Parkway and Williamson Valley Road, the state land that's ideal for multifamily or low-cost living, that's on a hub, that could be a bus route, could be anything it wants to be, but we need to be aggressive enough to say, now is the time to bring those properties or make a trade or do something with the state to bring those in, to make sure that we utilize them in the way this community sees fit to do so. And somebody says, well, maybe that's not in the best interest of the city. I think it's in the best interest of the city to work with the state and a private developer to bring those very types of housing to this community. I think we're remiss if we don't.
Mayor, can I throw in on that? We had brought this up before, and I don't know if we ever really cleaned it up. Affordable and workforce housing aren't just terms, they actually come with definitions and restrictions. Have we ever cleaned that up to get that out? Because I notice even today, we're using those words interchangeably, affordable, workforce. Well, we have water for workforce housing that's dedicated to that, but then that comes with definitions like you can't do rent-to-own, which would really help people get into a house because coming up with that down payment's really hard. Have we ever cleaned that up to where we get our own definitions out of our way of being creative in making homes affordable in Prescott?
The committee and the Planning Commission both talked about sort of narrowing that definition down, relying a lot on council's adopted definition in the water policy of workforce housing as the basis for using that term elsewhere throughout the general plan. So I think we're approaching consistency. That would be something we would want to look at as we go through the rest of the plan and verify that.
And I would add, I think that that's a good item for a strategic plan. If you have a general plan which encourages, you know, different types and ranges of housing, then you have to figure out how to get there, which involves what you just brought up, Mayor Protam.
Thank you. And Chris, along those lines, I do remember that discussion, and I think what we had ultimately done was discussed sending it to the Water Issues Committee to kind of work on some definitions to bring back to the council. Because you're right, we just adopted a water budget that has an allocation for workforce or affordable housing, and it's not well-defined. That may be something we wanted to find sooner rather than later, and then that way, it's in place for a strategic plan looking towards the future, if that's the direction people want to go. And we have a meeting next month, so that might work to talk about it there.
There was some discussion at Planning Commission regarding the urban development issues and the codes and regulatory issues section of Article Three, of Element Three. What they were looking for is to further acknowledge that there are particular issues associated with infill development that should be addressed and should be emphasized. Again, it's been mentioned by several of the council members this morning that infill development has the potential for being less costly than development around the periphery of the city. So that's one of the issues they tried to address here. The code and regulatory issue actually removed what the general plan committee felt was added flexibility to the plan by removing the potential for the city to adopt a form-based codes option as a parallel to the city's regular zoning code. Zoning treats land by area. Form-based code treats development by building type as opposed to land area. It looks at the ability to integrate uses rather than segregate uses. Traditional, what's... Traditional, what's called Euclidean zoning segregates uses, that's its purpose. It keeps houses over here and businesses over there, and that's what our zoning map looks like, and that's the purpose of that particular type of zoning. Form-based code says, no, it's okay to mix the two together. What we're concerned with is that they're compatible physically with each other rather than use-wise with each other. It's a major focus. The Planning and Zoning Commission went through the plan and struck all of the references to that particular issue. They felt it was unnecessary because of the existing flexibility in the city's land development code. We have sections of the code that will allow you to do something very close to form-based codes already in place through, through the city's special plan communities zoning district. And that was a focus that the, the Planning Commission took during their review of the plan. So they removed that, a lot of that. You will see strike-through sections like this as we continue through the rest of the plan because of that. Very few comments on the remaining sections of Element III by the Planning Commission. They skipped through it pretty rapidly. Yes, sir?
Mayor and Council, I would suggest that at, at the bottom of page 16, it talks about the water. Yavapai County Water Advisory Committee, that committee obviously is defunct, so that needs to be removed, or at least described as background for regional water planning, but it's no longer in existence.
Thank you, and that one here, Mark Two.
The remainder of Element III remained pretty much unchanged from the work that was done by the committee. So we'll skip right into Article IV, General Plan summary.
Before we go there.
Certainly.
Okay, because this is a general plan, and this is something that is directed through the process by the public, okay? I want to go to the section 3.3.9. All right? Understanding that this has been ratified already by the public, we're asking them to ratify it again. Prescott Fire Department is committed to aggressively addressing the threat of wildfire to our community. All right? It doesn't say somebody out there in the private sector. It says the Prescott Fire Department is this. Now, it says this proactive approach to fuel mitigation. All right? That's our fire department. That's not somebody else. So that's been my argument all the way along the line with regards to wanting to farm out what keeps this community safe. Fact of the matter is, the people of the city of Prescott ratified these statements already in the past, and we're going to ask them to ratify them again. And I would be surprised if they don't.
George, before you go on to Section Four.
Yes, ma'am.
Under 3.4.1 revenue structure, I think if we're going to be, let's see, one, two, three, four. Fourth paragraph down that page, if we're going to be mentioning specific businesses which are major retailers, we should also mention Lowe's and Costco, because surely those two businesses are important revenue generators for our sales tax.
There was actually some discussion at the General Plan Committee level of whether or not to include specific businesses in there because they do change.
Right.
If, if it's council's desire to make that more generic, we can do that, or we can include those specific businesses that you believe are, are appropriate to mention in the plan.
I have a question. Back to 3.3.9. After listening to Mr. Lamerson, and I don't want to get through, go through the same wordsmithing, but the Prescott Fire Department leadership, along with private commercial companies in this community, I, I don't know that we want to identify just our fire department as making Prescott fire-wise, because we have people out in the private sector that do that every day. So I wonder if we shouldn't insert that in there, not identifying specifically Prescott Fire Department, but in cooperation and coordination with the private sector, as making this community fire-wise.
Councilman, I could suggest that at the end of the first sentence there, and promotes fire-wise community strategies through effective public-private partnerships.
Thank you.
You know, I, I think the key word in that sentence that we're getting hung up on is leadership. We're saying Prescott Fire Department leadership. Well, I think we're going to continue, whether it's public or private, we're going to have to have our finger on the, on the pulse of what's going on fire-wise in Prescott in our own fire department. We're not asking to hand over the whole thing, and no matter how they decide to address the fire-wise threat, it needs to stay within our department, for sure, with the leadership to address it.
I think what he just said is important, because there is companies out there that go meet with people to make their properties private, fire-wise, and that needs to be identified within the plan.
Do we not assess that? Doesn't our fire department see that? They don't get any kind of report on that?
No, we have private people that do it in the community, and they don't have an assessment by the fire department. The fire department's not sole and separate into doing this. There's landscape companies that do it, and other folks out there that do it. I just don't want it to be led down the road to think the fire department is the only people that can make our community fire-wise, because that's not true.
I don't think, I don't think that's what I was pointing out. When it comes time, when it comes time to, to, to assess the vulnerability of this community with regards to fire danger, the public relies on the fire department. Now, I understand that there's private sector people that come over and take care of private property and get paid to do so. The fire department shouldn't be obligated to take care of private property and not reimbursed for the cost of service. That's part of the problem with trying to manage a public sector service that doesn't get paid for the service they deliver. So when we go out with the fire department, however, it is the fire department's responsibility to make sure, in my opinion, wherever, and we have the ability by code to tell people their property's not fire-wise or it's not safe. Now, by policy, we want the community fire-wise, but what we haven't done was by enforcement, apprise people of the situation. And we do have that capability, but we don't, I don't necessarily think it's a responsibility of the fire department to go and take care of people's private property. What I do think is that the fire department should have the responsibility of telling this community what's safe and what isn't.
I think Mr. McConnell's wording handled it well.
Me, too.
I, I don't have anything against the fire department. This wasn't about having a long discussion. It's just the fact when the private sector has the capability to do it as well, it should be in a general plan and not identified as just one department.
Okay.
That's what we're here for.
Got it, George?
I will point out that one of the issues that was addressed in the 2003 plan in that particular section was leading into the adoption of the, the city's wild and urban interface code that, that helps with that process of making the community fire-wise. So some of it was purely a leadership role in adopting a code that council has since adopted several updates to.
And that, that fire-wise thing did start in the private sector, by the way.
Yes, it did. The remainder of Element Four talks about a number of things such as balanced community values, balanced housing, historic preservation. Those issues all effectively are continually in the public eye and continually in council's radar. Pretty much anything that occurs that comes before you for action is going to affect one of those, those particular topics. Again, also preserving and protecting the environment being one of those.
Mayor, just a couple of questions and comments. 4.2, the second sentence, that was what I was referring to before about the assumption expressed that commercial industrial properties contribute more in revenue than they require in services. I don't know about that. So there's a question mark there, but we can deal with that. In 4.3, it talks about developer incentives, and I'm not sure what that means. Usually, it's public, public incentives for developers. Is that what that means?
Yes, sir.
Well, if we're talking about production strategies may be needed such as developer incentives to, to increase the supply of affordable housing, because of Arizona law, we don't have much in the way of incentives to put on the table. So I think in the general plan, saying that we should be putting something on the table, and we don't have the ability to do that, is a little problematic.
As, as part of the committee's discussion of that, I think one of their focuses, and maybe it's reflected better as we get further into the plan, was removal of disincentives as well as the potential for some small level of incentives. That, that can be worded differently to make that clearer, I think.
Wouldn't an incentive be dedicated water supply for affordable housing?
Well, it's, it's, you know, in affordable housing, it's about all the components which, which roll up to, you know, the sticker price of the house, and water availability is a big question. And we certainly have the ability to offer water availability within the city's resources, but the impact fees associated with that still have to be paid. So if, if the city is able to pay the impact fees, well, that would have to come from the general fund, not the water fund. And, you know, it goes on and on.
I would comment on that, George, that removing disincentives is a very important part of the, the logic. Some of those disincentives can be some of the codes and lot sizes and things like that. And then with regards to water, we, we reserved water. 20% of the alternative water supply was dedicated to housing that was a low-market, whatever you want to call it. Yes, that's an incentive. And within the market structure, if you allow that to take place, I'm not saying you mandate it, you allow it to take place. If it doesn't take place, that's how a market works, because the demand may not be there for it to take place. And the same thing with the lot sizes or the opportunities to develop multifamily, et cetera. What you don't do is you don't disincentify, disincentivize it by precluding it from its opportunity to exist.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Section 4.5, are you up there yet?
We are now.
Okay. Regarding complete street, isn't that only applicable to new development?
It can be made applicable when the city reconstructs streets, provided there's physical room to do work like that. Full reconstruction of a street with sufficient right-of-way may allow for a complete streets approach to that, that road reconstruction.
If I may offer a comment, I agree, well, I think I agree, if I heard a point, but I think a distinction needs to be made between two scenarios. Scenario one is creating new, in which case the plan can certainly express an interest in providing multimodal facilities. But with respect to existing, the issue is reconstruction and retrofitting, which is entirely a different situation involving cost and feasibility. So perhaps there could be some distinction which clarifies those two cases.
I think that would be a good idea. It's more of a reflection of reality.
Yeah.
And then on page 23, second paragraph down, Prescott residents and visitors currently enjoy a network of sidewalks, bicycle routes, bicycle lanes, and multi-use paths. In reality, we enjoy a limited network of sidewalks, bicycle routes, and bicycle lanes, et cetera. I would insert the word limited before network there. And then the second sentence following that, this network may be enhanced by the city's capital improvement program with the support of advocacy groups. The enhancement certainly shouldn't rest on the shoulders of private, nonprofit, and volunteer organizations. I think it's part of the city's responsibility to make those enhancements happen as part of our capital improvement program.
I have a problem with limited. Limited is just a word. I mean, what does that mean? As far as I'm concerned, 10 years ago would have been limited. I don't think it's limited. I think we've made a lot of strides in sidewalk connectivity, icicle routes, the multipurpose trails, the circle trail around Prescott. I don't know what the word limited means. I do believe we have an extensive network of all those things that will continue to get better in the future, but I don't think it's limited.
Well, the word network to me implies that it's all connected, and, and our system is not fully connected.
Partial connectivity. I made a note to look at that section to see if, if we can put language in that identifies that in fact we do have breaks in networks in various parts of town.
Okay.
One further comment, Mayor and, and Council. In 4.5, the second paragraph, it references the 2006 CYMPO Regional Transportation Study. We're right at the cusp of CYMPO adopting a 2015 study. And I understand as we sit today, it, it's not adopted, but certainly it may be adopted by, by the time that this workshop process is concluded. So just put a question on that.
So again, this is, this is the summary element of the plan. So there's some further discussion about historic preservation, the importance of that for the downtown, maintaining adequate water resources for future needs. Again, just a summary, there is a full element on water resources that you will get into a little further into the plan with goals and strategies for accomplishment of those goals.
Mayor, 4.8, end of, last sentence of the second paragraph, "A sustainable balance of water quality, water use, conservation, importation, and groundwater recharge is desirable but requires mitigation strategies." I'm not sure what that means. I would suggest that a better word, it would be management instead of mitigation.
Again, just summarizing future economic base, a strong economic base being important to the city. Some minor changes were made in that section by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, minor wording changes. Overall, the strategies, direction of the plan are addressed in a separate element. We will hit that element as we go through the remainder of the plan in future meetings.
George, can we just go back to 4.7 a little bit? You know, we've, we kind of agree with Councilwoman down here that, you know, there's a reality to life. In our general plan, I don't necessarily think it's fair to give characterization that is not really as true as we want to. You know, we're, we're in a process right now in conflict with the state and federal government. When we talk about preservation with sensitivity to private property rights, it's important to maintain our history. When, when we have, we've been ravaged over the last several years with the infiltration of different types of housing in, in historic neighborhoods that are now creating what I would call disruption to those neighborhoods because of the activity of the people occupying, not necessarily because of their ailments or because of their disabilities, it's, it's the activity of people. It's, it's the people that are creating an issue. And I think it's really important that when, when you do this and you say things like this, we need, we need to make sure that we have the enforcement capability to do exactly what it says, preservation with sensitivity to private property rights. Well, where's our sensitivity when we allow neighborhoods to be taken over with bad behavior? I just have a problem with that. So I think somewhere in here, we need to address enforcement of things that we have in the law that would protect these neighborhoods from bad behavior. So just sharing that.
Thank you. I do believe we have additional discussion of that, again, in the housing sections of our plan. One of the things to keep in mind, too, is that the actual One of the things to keep in mind, too, is that the actual enforcement process and the focus of enforcement may be appropriate, addressed in the strategic plan that Council has already talked a little bit about this morning.
That absolutely needs to be in there.
That may be the focus, and that may be the point where that can occur.
Thank you.
The last of the comments in element four relate to maintain cooperation on regional level issues. There are numerous issues that affect the city of Prescott that we have little or no control over locally because of the many other jurisdictions surrounding us, whether it's state, county, other municipalities. There are issues that we don't have direct or full control over. Coordinating and cooperating with other entities in accomplishing regional goals is appropriate according to both the committee comments and their writing and supported by the general, excuse me, supported by the planning commission and their ratification or recommendation of this section. That actually accomplishes staff's quick review of all of those four elements that begin the general plan. Again, these are introductory and not substantive. The real meat of the plan starts with the land use element, which will be taken up at the beginning of your next meeting. At this point, staff will stand down and answer any questions that may come up, either from council or from the public.
George, there's another reference to the Yabapai County Water Advisory Committee on page 26. If the prior reference that the city manager mentioned is obsolete, perhaps we should delete that sentence.
Certainly. And we'll scour the plan for any other references.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before we go to the public, any questions from the council? Okay.
Gary Warb. Thank you, council and staff. Having served three and a half years on this committee, I would like to now thank Councilwoman Lammerson and Blair for clarifying, which I really thought we should have done in the beginning, the purpose, which we need to go to and should have been expressed years ago. I thank you both for talking about prioritizing and strategic plan attempt. For me, it was a big struggle coming every meeting on LMS-1 to understand our purpose, because we, in essence, were not representing the public, or the public didn't really show up. At most, we had three people that would show up. So I see sentence number two in the introduction as a fallacy. We did not have a real community representation. I appreciated City Manager McConnell's addressing a three-part strategy that clarifies for me where we should be going with this. The general plan is just that. I don't like to use the word regurgitation, but we really did regurgitate 2003, tried to improve it. We were under strict orders that we were not designing a strategic plan. And I think the outcome of this specifically should go towards a strategic plan that can be implemented with codes attached. So thank you for clarifying. That really made my day.
Hello. George Sheets. I was on the committee, and one thing we were careful about, like your word "limited," is that this plan is going to be reviewed by potential companies, businesses, the public that may be relocating here. And we want to put our best foot forward. And so we have areas such as the roads, the bike lanes, the lakes, housing, availability of low-cost housing. There are several issues that we have, but we try to spin it around to where we're not critiquing negatively what it is that we have to offer as a community. Now, we're not wanting to put our head in the sand as we're doing that, but we, it is important that the language be as positive as it can be, you know, while still addressing, identifying where those issues are. But we, you know, so, you know, I wouldn't want to use the word "limited," you know, even though we, you know, with your new committee, et cetera, we're definitely going to be addressing those things and making things better. But we're just trying to, this is kind of a policy from the council, is should you really put our best foot forward in terms of how we communicate this and convey ourselves as an active, growing community with a lot of potential? And, you know, even our revenues, we don't get in and say, you know, I don't know how we're going to pay for all this stuff in the future because of this and that and whatever. We don't want to appear that to the public, and the plan should get us in the right direction. But we don't want to be too negative about ourselves here.
Thank you, George. That's one of the reasons why you were on the general plan committee. I also, as representative with the P&amp;Z, I believe, I also think that, yeah, this is a sales tool. And you're 100% correct. A strategic plan, on the other hand, is an implementation tool where we can approach some of these issues. And that's why it's more important to get that strategic plan started rather than sitting on a dime. So thanks.
Barbara Jacobson. I wasn't going to speak, but I've been listening for a while, and I disagree with George. I understand the purpose of the general plan. However, I think we need to be honest. And if you've walked and biked around this town, the word "limited" is quite appropriate. And any other words that may seem a little bit negative may also just be a little bit honest. And I think if this is a groundwork for what we need to do in this community and what we need to look at, then it needs to be honest. It needs to say what's out there. And then the strategic plan apparently will reflect the work that needs to be done. Okay? Thank you.
Good morning. Elizabeth Ruffner, 214 Park Avenue, excuse me. Thanks for using strategic plan, repeated, repeated, repeated. Appoint a committee, get to work, start doing that planning with the community. I commend you. My first comment is going to be this. I'm not from the government, but I'm here to help you. I tried really hard to know more about the issue, not the issue, but the subject of telecommuting. When we were working on the plan, and my knowledge came late and slow, but it's around the rest of the country affecting economic development. By one estimate, telecommuting has ridden 79% between 2003 and 2012. And now, this is last July, makes up 2.6% of the American workforce, and we don't need to build a building for them. We tried, the committee tried a long time to get you to come to us with the definition of workforce and affordability, affordable. They're not synonymous terms. And we tried really hard to make clear when we used the word "workforce" in the plan that affordability has no application. Affordability means if you can pay for a McMansion, that's affordable to you, not the point. I also would like to say that in addition to appointing a strategic plan committee to get going, when the 2003 plan was adopted, before it was adopted, from the very beginning of that process, we, the committee, went to every church, every group who would have us, and described the process all the way through. Staff prepared material for every one of those encounters, producing them in map form generally and in chart form for people to get a visual impression of what we were talking about. I believe now we need to go to the public, as many people as will have, groups of two or three people with staff, with a board or something, very simple, 15 minutes, and asked to be invited to every group which meets in the community for the next two months. Not only to introduce the general plan to most of the community, thanks for everyone who's here and has come repeatedly to our meetings, Daniel, but we haven't made the effort we need to make in getting this product to the public. We need to go to them. The other thing I would like to tell you is that the St. Luke's Foundation is producing a webinar in April, which I believe will be done very professionally. And Councilman Kukneal has agreed to appear on that televised product of discussing not only complete streets, but the entire transportation issue. With his broad background with CIMPO and with sitting on this council, he has agreed to work with that group, producing that webinar, which we hope will make a difference in light of growing consciousness of lack of funds. I don't know whether new headlines have made that a new issue or not, but it seems like an old one to me. Thank you for your work. I can't thank you enough for planning to go into strategic planning following all these years of work. I'll be around to help as long as I'm able and have a voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Anyone else? Sure.
My name is Daniel Matz, and I live over on Merritt Street. I would like to make sure that everybody keeps in mind, one of the goals we set out were for, okay, the 2003 plan was a big, sick thing. And we were looking at it, and it's like, well, this is real good if you want to get to sleep without using narcotics. So I would encourage everybody to realize that we've tried to make it much less wordy, much easier for somebody to say, I'm looking for a specific part of the plan, and be able to look for a specific part of the general plan. So I would like to encourage you to not add a lot of stuff and to understand that we are wanting this to be something that somebody elsewhere in the country can look at and say, this looks like a good thing. I'd like to go there. That is the reason that we didn't want to air our dirty laundry in it. We wanted to make this a positive, here's the good things we can do to make this city a better city going forward. And that's why instances such as saying a limited network, you know, it's pretty clear that we have a long way to go. And when we talk about wanting to incorporate complete streets, I think we're pointing out that we have intention of doing that. And later in the plan, when we talk about circulation and all that, we're talking about trying to improve on conditions for pedestrians and for bicycling. So I think putting "limited" in there is kind of unnecessary. This is just a brief overview, these first four sections. And I think, you know, if you want to point out that we need more work in this area or that, the more detailed sections will probably be the place to do it. If we add language to every section, we're not going to have the shortened plan that we set out to have. So I'm glad that we went through this first four sections as quickly as we did, and, you know, I'm looking forward to the rest of it. I do think we need to do a lot of public outreach. I don't want to have this, all this, by the time we're done, four years' worth of work turned down because we didn't go out there and advocate for it enough. And I know that myself and the members of the committee should be willing, I hope, to go out and try to convince people to vote for this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Mayor, I don't know how we do this, but, you know, I think Elizabeth alluded to this. Anytime we went to the public, sometimes there was only one guy from the public there, and it was Daniel. He had probably perfect attendance, I think, at all these meetings for the past four years. And I don't know how we do it, but somehow, when we list the names of people responsible for putting this plan together, I think I'd like to see Daniel listed in there somewhere, because he did have a lot of input on it. And maybe if we put under "public," we put the name Daniel. So I don't know how the rest of the council feels about that, but he was, he's been great.
Okay. Yes, sir.
David Turbifill. Been interesting, listened to some of the stuff that's been presented here this morning. And we'd like to say a couple things, you know, to keep in mind that a general plan is just that. You should be laying out a vision for where you want to take the city in the next city council, and the next city council after that, for the next five or 10 years. But I think this plan, if some of the things that you guys raised, well, are important, they seem to be, to me, more important for a strategic or very pointed, you know, short-term type goal as opposed to a long-term vision. So keep that in mind. The other thing, so another thing you guys talked about was jobs and traffic and regulations or deregulating, and whether or not the growth in affordable housing. In some ways, you know, there has to be, Mayor, or Councilman Lammerson was concerned about, you know, providing roads to a lot of workers that live outside our community and come, transport into the community. But when you look at this revenue streams for city funding, you know, you actually get more, you don't necessarily need more rooftops. You don't get it from property tax. That's pretty obvious. I mean, that has been time and time again. So either you need to, what you need to do, if you can, is increase wealthy population. If you look at some of your sources for funding, you get more from personal income tax, the money that comes back from the state of Arizona, personal income tax, than you do through property taxes that you collect at the city, on all the properties that you have in the city, even though the value is quite extraordinary of what the value of the property is in this community. What you need to do, or what the community needs to do, is you need to have a reason for people to come here, stay here for a short time, and spend money here. Okay? So in a lot of ways, what Mr. Kukneal was saying about creating wealth through job opportunities and whatnot, you know, there's a lot of lost opportunities. I mean, my business is down on the Sixth Street area. I'm on Easy Street. There's some vacant, you know, a couple of vacant buildings down there. I think the properties are underutilized. You know, I'd like to expand myself. I don't necessarily think that always the cities need to necessarily give us a handout to build. What we need is, we need sales. You guys, the former city councils or whatnot gave enticements and invested in the mall. But the mall, I mean, you go up there, now it's a ghost town. So you, you know, you ended up giving away, so to speak, revenue for the city to entice the mall to be here. Now, the mall hasn't done their job, so are you going to do something to help them? You don't have to give them more money. You have to give people a reason to go spend money there. Same thing with downtown. You know, it's interesting to me, it's like we have this low building height, you know. If you had, you know, this recent proposal in the paper, I guess Mike Phan and Michael Taylor came by to, wants to build a new retirement home for himself, I guess, and stay within the city of Prescott. So here's a fairly wealthy individual that wants to spend his money in the downtown community. But we don't have, when you talk about housing, we don't have that. We don't have multi-story. We have very limited situations in the downtown area. So we don't necessarily need to decrease the property values to make affordable housing. You guys, the city of Prescott, a lot of the people, you guys are going through strife over the drug rehab homes. I mean, that's just no other way to say it. And for people that come to apply at my facility, at my factory, a lot of them come from those places. You know? But what if there was, you know, there's a lot of workers that work in this downtown community. What if 15 years ago or 20 years ago, when they built Albertson's Depot Marketplace, if that facility had been built multi-level and there was low, basically worker housing built atop of that? So that people don't have to necessarily drive, so they have to go from PV to work at Albertson's? Or from PV to work at DT Products down on Easy Street? I mean, that's what happens. Almost every one of my staff members, with very few exceptions, live in Prescott Valley or someplace out of town. And then, so, lastly, you know, Steve Blair brought up the thing about the Firewise deal. Of course, this, you know, as you well, as you all know, this strikes very dear to me. I think this community, you should be cautious about, from a public sector's point of view, of saying that of saying that we want to offer all aspects of a private situation to take care of fuel management or wildland urban interface. It is the city's responsibility to protect homes, property, and structures in the city of Prescott. Okay? Basically, since the Granite Mountain firefighters all died and we have disbanded that division, the city has been low to put the one division, the one area within public safety that actually made the city money or cost the city was negligible to the city. You've basically gone on and not supporting it. What you have now is not supporting it. You'd have no other additional personnel to go and fight a wildland fire if it was outside our city lines and it was, came in much like the Indian fire of 2001, 2002. I just had a tree removed by a private contractor. It cost me $350 at my residence. So while we all don't like federal income taxes, we don't like government being in our way, that's fine, but the majority of all those funds come from the federal government. So if we as a community don't like to, we don't want to spend a lot of money into government taxes, then we shouldn't accept it. But then we need to take care of our own business here in town. So are you going to tell all the citizens that you guys need to go protect your property? Well, you've got really very limited options, I think, to make them to do that. If they can't afford it, they can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mayor, I think one of the things he was speaking about with, you know, putting something over Albertson's, he's, I think we're kind of addressing that a little bit and Councilwoman Wilcox brought it up in the committee meetings, is the form-based development. And basically, I like call it the European model. They've been doing it over there for centuries. They got businesses on the bottom, they got housing over the top, and it seems to work real well. And I think it's something that could fit well in Prescott.
Unfortunately, the Planning and Zoning Commission deleted that language, but I was glad to hear George say that we have some types of zoning that can accomplish essentially the same thing. Is that correct, George?
There's a lot of flexibility in the special plan communities, districts, and our planned area development process in the, in the existing land development code. It would allow a lot of the same things that form-based code would allow. It's a different focus to it than form-based codes.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else here?
I got my button there. Yeah, I would like to remind my fellow council that year, about a year or two ago, I can't remember, maybe three, I can't remember, but we did change some of the codes, especially in the downtown, was we took it back to a timeframe in history when you didn't have required parking on, for redevelopment and such like that. Am I correct with that, George?
Yes, sir.
So the opportunity for redevelopment in the downtown historic district is there. We did make the opportunity for water available, for housing available, if indeed the housing met certain criteria. That's there. So there are ways that you can incentivize the free market to do things if they want to. Evidently, nobody saw the benefit to redeveloping some of the historic buildings downtown for residential and things like that and using some of the things we put into place. But we can't go mandate that they do it, but what we did do is we created an opportunity for it to exist. So, George, if I'm not mistaken, we did do some of that in the downtown area for that purpose.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Question. We keep talking about the A strategic plan to follow. This will not go to the public until August. And there was conversation that the strategic plan probably should follow the acceptance of the general plan by the public. That's a long way off. Do you anticipate that we'll be talking about a start or formulation of strategic plans to follow or to move along simultaneous, assuming that the general plan will be adopted?
Mayor, I would suggest that since four years have just been spent with very little reengineering on a plan that took three other years to put before the public and that the public ratified in 2004, that we try to work concurrently so that when we go out to the public to sell the benefit, when it is a benefit of a general plan, that we can also sell the benefit of the strategic plan at the same time. And while we don't send the strategic plan to the voters to ratify, they need to know that the strategic plan, based on what they're voting for, is going to be there. And then if we work on it, it's sort of like at the same time, I would suggest that maybe by 2015, we would have a strategic plan somewhat been developed and ready to get ratified by the council. That, that would be my suggestion.
Any other comment? Gene?
Let Charlie go.
Mayor, thank you. As far as a strategic plan goes, you know, this is something that while it's come up a few times in the last couple of meetings, is it a strategic plan to implement parts of the entire general plan? Is it going to be focused in certain areas? Are we really talking more about specific area plans as far as implementing? Do we have the staff time while dealing with our budget at the moment and trying to do a general plan? These are all things I'd like to discuss before we just flat out say, we're going to go do a strategic plan. Let's put some scope to it. Let's understand what it is we're trying to accomplish because just in the first couple pages here, there's about 50 different things we could have a strategic plan for, but we want to make sure anything we say we're going to do, we can actually accomplish. So I'd like to have further discussion and analysis of that before we just say, we're going to have a strategic plan related to the general plan and let's go to work.
Okay.
I think if the strategic plan is going to be based on the general plan, we need to let the voters tell us yea or nay on this general plan. But in the meantime, we could begin the process of setting ourselves up for work on the strategic plan, define the elements, as Charlie suggested, scope it out. Let's not waste any time. I think everyone has spoken to that issue, that we really need to get rolling on it.
Okay. Steve? Any comment on that?
I think it's important to, for this council, to determine the membership of the strategic plan and get those people put in place and start the dialogue now. And then as this thing unfolds, then we're already ready to go. Instead of waiting until the general plan's over, we know we got to have a strategic plan. So I think we need to figure out whether it's a council, that I appoint one person, everybody here appoints one person, or we use the makeup of the general plan that's already in place. What does that mechanism look like? And let's get those people put in place and let them know what we expect and give them some parameters, general parameters upfront. And then when this thing unfolds and we can get specific with all the different elements.
And just real similar to what my councilmen and women have been saying, there's a lot of things in this that we can't really wait for a strategic plan to come out with down the road. There's some immediate needs. And it doesn't mean that we can't just start working on these things immediately and just, you know, I think the big one Mr. Turbifill brought up, and that's what are we going to do with wildland? You know, we've been continuing with the crews out there, but I think, as we've seen recently, courts and boards are redefining what we can and can't do and how we have to classify things. So I think that's going to be stuff that we can jump on right away. We, of course, during this building boom, want to encourage housing that people can afford. So the strategic plan is good. I think it has to get approved, the general plan has to get approved by the voters before we really launch into it, but that doesn't mean that we're not going to work on a lot of the other needs that are, that we're talking about today and in the meetings of the future.
Jimmy, you have something else?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I concur with fellow council members up here to some degree that we should be implementing our thought processes today on the, you know, basically you heard a number of our members that served for the last three, four years on the general plan acknowledge the fact that this plan almost mirrors the one that was already ratified. There is no reason to sit and wait for another six months before we have an opportunity to start planning for the strategic plan. So I agree with Blair. I think that we need to put together a committee of the public to serve at the council's pleasure, to put together a strategic focus and start going there. And I think it comes out of a general plan that has been vetted out through your P and Z and through the public, and then it comes to us. And then our job's going to be to present this to the voters. And at the same time, we're presenting this to the voters, it would be nice for the voters to know that we do have some intent of implementing a strategic plan.
Craig, obviously, the support will have to come from you and your, your people. What don't you be thinking along the lines, you've heard the conversation? And we certainly cannot move ahead of, of the capabilities to support the effort. So maybe the next meeting on the general plan, we can talk more about this. Chris, you got something?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing, and this, this is something I noticed when I was in the general plan. As we go to form a strategic plan committee, in the general plan, there was a lot of special interests represented, I felt. You know, there was somebody that was in there because they just wanted to see public transportation. There was somebody in there that, that was very passionate about historic preservation. That was their focus. And, and another person was trails. I just, when we put together a strategic plan, because this is going to be what's getting pushed forward, I think we need to watch out for that and make sure that there's a very rounded people that can come together to give us that plan and it's not just, I mean, I even saw some people that once their, their part of the general plan was over, the attendance dropped off. You know, towards the end of the general plan meeting, there was just a handful of people left. We were worried about even having a quorum. So just as we go into doing a strategic plan, let's make sure that it's very rounded people and it's not just special interests represented.
Will we talk about that more? Yeah.
I would like to warn you, my friends, the public has turned down general plans. Don't for a moment presume that your work is done. Do all the strategic planning you want to, based on all these years of work of the citizens of the community, not special interests. The people you appointed represented knowledge they had accumulated over years of experience, primarily as volunteers, but not entirely. A number of members of the committee represented economic development and other kinds of commercial activities. We represented the public on that committee, and I think we did broadly bring that concept into what you see today. But don't start counting your chickens. You have six months of work to do. You have to go to the public. I'm warning you. You have to take your goodwill and good intentions and hard work to the public. They haven't come to you, they're not going to, they never have. You have to spend some time selling the general plan. All you want to do is between then on talk about strategic planning and specific area plans, which are neglected because of budget issues and others, yeah, big budget issues, but think about the general plan, which is the voice of the people when you're planning next year's budget and the year after. The minute details or the more minute details of actually implementing the voice of the people in this plan comes after they have approved it.
Okay. Well taken. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Well, after listening to some of the more comments and thoughts from your council, I was sitting back there and I looked at this, and you guys have more, a lot of people have already noted that very little of the public has been in, in a process of this. I mean, obviously with some exceptions. And I don't want to really belittle the good work that the number of people that have put into this, but if you really think about this, this is still 10 times too big to take to the voter. I'm sorry. That's how I feel. You have a lot of stuff in here. You need to focus down, you need to drill down on this, on what, this is a five-year or a 10-year goal. And then in five years, you need to go, or four years, whatever the election cycle is, that would be appropriate to do this. If you already are, you know, if Ms. Ruffner says that, you know, maybe this doesn't get passed by the electorate, well, okay, so what? Does that mean the council and staff doesn't continue to set policy and go forward with its mission of Prescott? That's why this mission here, this vision is, you know, this is the first time I've been involved with this. You know, whether or not that when I was a, you know, a, an actual resident of the city of Prescott in 2003, 2004, and voted on the prior one, I can't even tell you because it's been so long, I don't remember. Okay? There's a lot of things that the public goes and votes for or against. You know, they might vote for something like this, they don't even have any idea, but then when you guys, I say you guys, when the council or committees get into the strategic nuts and bolts of it, that's when, and then the information gets disseminated into the various media outlets, whether it be radio, TV, or newspaper, the public gets a bit more interested. If this was 10 or 15 pages of a vision, you'd have a better chance, I think, one way or another with the city or with the voter. But regardless of that, you know, when you get down to the nuts and bolts, whether it be, you know, the wildland fire division or the traffic situation or the roads situation, I mean, you know, I've lived in Prescott my entire life. And roads today, in a way, I mean, for me, a transportation issue, I can't go from one side of town, there's not a clear-cut way to go through town. And yet we've spent millions and millions and millions of dollars over the last 30, 40 years on roads. And there's roads that yet need to be maintained. But to me, it's like the vision should be, do we make transportation an issue or a vision of clear-cut transportation to get from one place to another? Or we want to, as a community, have a goal that the downtown Prescott area reaches more than just the three or four blocks right around the courthouse? You know, do we expand other activities further off, you know, away from downtown that restricts traffic? You know, you know, your main thoroughfare is Gurley Street, I mean, some of the main thoroughfares go right through the most congested areas of the community. So all I'm saying is that maybe you guys, staff and other people, I know this is late in the game, but maybe you need to be thinking about stripping this down. Thank you.
Thank you.
I happen to disagree with Elizabeth for the first time ever, I think. Actually not. I think the, the iron and the fire is right now, I think the public would love to hear that this community representation is planning to move forward with strategies for the future of Prescott. We spent four years on this, it's four years now. I agree with the gentleman, it's big, it doesn't have a real chutzpah to it, but I think we need to see something from the city that says, we really are going to move forward and we want to do that now. So I humbly disagree with Elizabeth and think it's, the iron's hot, let's do it.
Okay. Thanks, Gary. Just a comment.
If I may say one word?
Go right ahead.
We can use the strategic planning on the parts of this that are very similar to the 2003, and if the voters voted down, we're back to the 2003 plan, and we really haven't lost any work. All the strategic planning group would have to do is make sure that it still adheres to the 2003 plan. So I think getting a start on it sooner rather than later probably makes sense. And I would respectfully say to Mr. Turbifill, this is very late in the process. We fought tooth and nail to cut this down as much as we could, and there were a lot of people who didn't want to cut it down any more than it has been, and that's why my push is to please, let's not make it grow again. But we cut out everything we could get, get agreement on cutting out. There, there was a committee that voted on things. So this is about as streamlined as we were able to get it, and it's much more streamlined than it was. So we made a lot of progress in that direction, and maybe we can do a better job on the 2025 plan. But this is supposed to be a 10-year plan, and, you know, I think we've done what we could.
Just a comment, I think if a, someone not familiar with Prescott laid the 2003 plan down in this proposed plan, what's most noticeable is the demographic schedule showing what's happening. The increase in 65 years and older absorbs all of the loss of the 019 years. Oh, and if that continues for another 10 years, I'm not sure where we're going. You know, our birth rate in Prescott is almost zero, and not that kids are not being born here, but they're born in Prescott Valley. So our birth rate in Prescott itself is almost zero, because our hospital chose to do that type of work in Prescott Valley. So, but I think we all got the message on this part, and we can talk about that at the next meeting. George, how far do you want to go today? We're...
I do, I do have a comment, Mayor. Referring to city attorney. If I'm not mistaken, and correct me if I'm wrong...
Sure.
We put this before the voters, and the voters turn it down, we simply revert to the 2004 general plan.
We don't really revert to it, it just remains in effect, but yeah, same notion.
So there answers your question, Mr. Turbifill. If we took one document from about this thick to about this thick, and if they turn it down, we go back to the one we had, this almost mirrors it only in shorter form, so thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, we have no other topics to discuss with you this morning. Again, we will pick up with the land use element at your next workshop meeting, getting into the meat of the plan at that point.
Okay, so you're through with it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anything else? Anything else for the public? We're adjourned.